We're going to begin tonight's meeting now at 7:30 because I'm going to stall.
Right now.
And now with a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we began at 7:29 and prevented somebody from the opportunity, we'd be in error. Well, approval for that, a motion to approve the village board meetings from February 15, 2024.
Make a motion.
Any additions, mega major corrections? Those to agenda?
That was to an item on the agenda, it wasn't to the agenda itself.
Carrying none, all in favor?
Aye.
Carry. Moving on to citizens comments. I'm going to ask people, because we have a full agenda, that if you can keep your agendas to a reasonable, or your comments to a reasonable length, please.
Good evening. Mary Ann Williams, 2 Division Street, representing the Greater Baldensville Chamber of Commerce. Tonight was the grand reopening at the fireside by the river. Beautiful.
Would've been there, but it conflicted a little bit.
Yes, a little much going on. Very well attended, and the new owner, Brian Holmes, very open to doing things, doing more things in the village. How about we leave it at that? Thank you all to the ones who've been coming to our recent events. Got to tell you, Chief got quite a shout out yesterday at our coffee talk. One of our members who goes to a lot of chamber events said he has never, ever seen a police officer attend a chamber event. So, very good.
I've seen you at chamber events in the past.
He was attending other events from other areas.
Yeah, he's talking about when he goes to other chambers.
Other chambers. That is what makes buildings so special.
Speaking of the fireside, our lunch next week, we'll be there. Today is the last day to register, so if you haven't already done so, and I know two of you have, anybody else can sign up. We have an after-hours event coming up on Thursday, March 21st, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Despite the wicked weather last week, we had a great turnout at Seneca Savings. This one will be at the Office of Erin's Angels, which is a wonderful organization working to feed children, mainly in Oswego County, but she does do some school districts in Anadaga County. And her office is up 57 in Phoenix, but hey, we're the Greater Baldensville Chamber of Commerce. But the real exciting news that I have to announce is, some of you may remember from years past, we had something called the GBCC Members Showcase at Anheuser-Busch. And this is where organizations and businesses that are members could buy a table, and then we'd sell tickets to the general public. People would come in, visit those tables. It was a very popular event. We were planning the 2021 when I got a call from AB saying we can't have people coming into the plant. And that's when I knew that the whole world was going to be turned upside down. So, our board president, excuse me, our board vice president, Melanie Randolph, and I had been meeting with the leadership out at AB since last summer, working to get them involved in things in the village. And they said, we'd be happy to have this event again. So that's April 16. I'm in the process of selling the vendor tables right now, but then tickets to the general public will go out later this month. Thank you.
Step forward, please, Mr. Wells.
How much time do we get? Is there a timer? We're not going to see you a long time, but I just want to make sure I can say everything I want to say.
There's Shepherd's book.
Okay. So, you got to forgive me, I just, I've been teaching since 7:45 this morning, and then I just taught a class in SUNY Oswego, just got back. So I wrote down a little bit of what I wanted to say. My name is Burl Wells. I am, unfortunately, I just moved out of the village a few months ago, but I feel, I still feel that I have a vested interest in the village because my family had lived in the same house on McCary Street since it was built in 1840, so I grew up in the village. I'm a former trustee, I sat up there about 20 years ago. I'm the son of a former mayor. And I'm here to speak, to express my opposition to the proposition to a village elections from March to November. I think that would be a huge mistake for Baldensville. We all know that Baldensville is a unique and special place, and that's why a lot of us are here tonight, right? Because we care about this village and this place so much. Part of what makes us unique is that when it comes to election, electing village board members and mayors over the years, we have always stayed away from the major political parties, whose platforms have virtually nothing to do with village issues, such as zoning, infrastructure improvements, parks, beautification, police protection, and riverfront development, among, among many others. This is our strength, not our weakness. The only focus of village campaigns should be what is best for the village. We do not need or want the influence of major parties in our elections. I think they could really care less about the issues important to village residents. And I am a Democrat. I don't even care who knows that. I have been since I was 18 years old in 1983, but I do know that I have been involved in the Democratic Committee at the county level, and I do know that they have been talking about trying to get the villages to change their elections to November for quite a long time. That comes from the county Board of Elections. I'm just going to make a political statement here. I don't think, I don't like the way, the fact in New York State that our Board of Elections are run by Democratic and Republican officials. I think it should be an independent group. And if that makes people uncomfortable that I'm actually bringing up Democratic and Republican issues, that's good. And that's making my whole point, because we shouldn't be talking about those things in the village. So I don't like the fact that the Democratic Party in particular is trying to do this, even though I'm a member of that party. I have a few more things too that I want to say. Oh, I've seen a lot of criticism, and I know there's a group of people that think that more people will, will vote in November elections, but I want to give you a little history lesson. I'm a teacher, right? So I've been teaching all day, so I'm going to continue. I think we could all use a little lesson in the history of Baldensville and what's happened. So some of the criticism is, well, not a lot of people vote. Well, first of all, you'd have to give a reason for people to vote, and people should become interested in their community. I don't think that by moving elections to November and then getting swelled up in like the divisive rhetoric that's going on, the division that's going on in our country, would really get people focused on village issues, right? So in the past, people that ran for mayor or for the village board would do so because they had common concerns focusing on the village. And when I was a member of the village party for decades, I think I've knocked on doors on every single street in this village from the 1980s right through the early 2000s. We would have people that may have been liberal Democrats, sort of Republicans, and nobody cared, we didn't talk about that. That was not a litmus test, that was not a requirement. We were just like-minded people that wanted to do something because this is a place that we called home and we care about. So I just, I'm really upset. And I also, I got to tell you, and I know that you, there's another proposition to put the elections in June. I don't agree with that either. I feel like, you know what, the elections in March, when you have to get out there and knock on doors in January and February, kind of shows that we're pretty hearty people, right? I think we're all becoming a little bit soft. I can remember, I can remember going to political meetings for the village party in December and then laying out like our plan for January and February, and what speech we were going to, you know, do on certain weekends, and make sure we, you know, didn't knock on doors during football games. It was all very, you know, well-planned. And I, I don't know, I kind of like that. I feel like traditions are important, and I guess what I'm trying to say is, I think Baldensville especially, I think everybody in this room knows it, and I think we should, we should keep our traditions and keep it that way. I have seen some criticism of the current board, and I don't agree with it. I just, I want to go back a little bit. I read a letter from somebody in the Messenger a week or two ago, and it said something about, oh, there's not a lot of cooperative agreements among the village and other places. Well, I can tell you that Mayor Wells, I don't know if it was like 1990, 1991, started an agreement with the Baldensville School District, and we still, that agreement is still in place today. The village fuels up, gets their fuel from the school district, and I believe after that, now the district, or the district gets its salt from Baldensville, and that's still going on. And of course, we have Canton Woods Senior Center, which is a great institution that has been in place for a long time, that is certainly a cooperative agreement between the two towns and the village. And those are just a couple of examples. One more thing, and then I'll be done. Sorry, Bruce, I appreciate it. Yeah, I, I'm, I've been teaching a long time, I'm tired, I'm just rambling, but I've also heard people say, there was a Facebook conversation a couple of years ago, that there was voter suppression going on in Baldensville. And I found that very disturbing, just because people are not coming out and vote, there is not voter suppression, right? In fact, I don't, I didn't really want to go this route tonight, but I'm going to, and this is the last thing I'm going to say. If you go back, you know, people are talking about diversity and all those things, I'm going to go back and tell you. In 1989, my mother, Jean Wells, ran for mayor, beat an eight-year incumbent, was the first and only woman so far that has served as mayor. So not only did we have a female mayor in 1989, the, the police chief at that time was a converted Jew, who had a picture of a big poster of Martin Luther King Jr. on the, on the wall in the police chief's office. And then the following election, two years later, when my mother ran free election, she had appointed a village justice who happened to be an African-American law professor, and I assume who is still our village justice today, and was elected resoundingly against a very well-known and very well-respected woman who was the lay-sender town judge. And that was quite an accomplishment in 1989. And so, don't anyone say that we've never had diversity in Baldensville. We certainly have, and it was quite a while ago. And the first time my mother ran for mayor, there were, she got 776 votes, I still remember that, and the incumbent had gotten 586, so that's over 1,300 votes, that's a lot of people. So we have had elections with a lot of people voting in March. And I just wanted to remind people of that. I think sometimes people may not remember, but I remember, and I think that's an important point to make. So I'm going to leave you with that. And again, I just want to reiterate, reiterate the fact that I think we should keep, I hope, I wish I could vote, I can't because I would outside the village, it's a mile up the road, but I would hope that people would have enough sense to say, let's keep our traditions, let's focus on village issues, let's keep Republican, Democratic politics out of the village and, and run as, as ourselves. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your passion, Professor Wells.
Thank you.
I also have notes. Keep me on track. I...
I was afraid you were going to undo this.
It's very lengthy, no, it's just, I was looking up the definition of a village in the American edition of the Oxford English Dictionary, and it says, "A village is a self-contained district or community within a town or city regarding of, regarding," can't read my own writing, "regarded as having features characteristic of village life." A suburb is an outlying district of a city, especially a residential one. And there are two developments being proposed within a very small area, of which I am sandwiched in between. One has, I think, 176 units, one has 352, which would add approximately 700, 800, 900 cars to the village. We are in danger of becoming a suburb. I've lived in bedroom communities. They suck. They just suck eggs. They have no culture, they have no community, they're awful. I moved out of it, and I moved to a village in Baldensville because I couldn't stand the bedroom community. Nothing was left, no one was left in the bedroom communities, and these are villages in name only. Only kids in the schools, and nannies, and housekeepers were all that was left, and a couple of stores. That was it. Do we want that? Is that what we want? I mean, because that's the choice. We could address the traffic with things like a circular bus route that could take people out to the Y, out to Tops. We could petition Trader Joe's. Trader, I love Trader, who doesn't love Trader Joe's? They have really good stuff for not a lot of money compared to Wegmans. You know, it's tasty, thrifty shopping. Who can beat that? We got decisions to make, but I just don't see adding all these apartments as being beneficial to the people who live here now. That's the question. What is going to benefit the, you know, everyone keeps talking about, well, they want to have housing, but what about the people who are living here now? What does it bring to us?
Sally, what you're talking about is why both of those situations are being reviewed. They haven't even been proposed, they're at the review stage with the planning board.
I'm just reminding...
This board has really nothing to do with it until it goes through that process and reaches a point where they need legislation.
Right, I'm just...
You're reiterating what you told us before, yes?
Right.
With more passion than, yeah. We hear you.
I'm just putting it on the record, I just think it's really important.
Make sure you come out to the public hearing when they, if it reaches, make sure you come out to the public hearing when it reaches that stage.
Oh, yeah. Keep me away.
And in terms of Trader Joe's, you know, it's wonderful, but corporations make business decisions.
Right, but we got lots of...
Those 500 apartments may be enough to get them to come.
Yeah. We got a lot going on in the, you know, the neighborhood. People drive to Trader Joe's into WIT from Baldensville. I'm just saying, it's a draw.
Well, that's, that's their choice.
I'm just saying, if you want Trader Joe's, you drive sometimes, but it'd be nice to have it, but there, if, if you're interested in having a Trader Joe's, they have a website, you can petition to have what added to our community. I encourage people to do that. The Sally petition.
We hear you.
Okay. Nikki Frylou, 15 Charlotte Street. I will just say to Sally, I heard before, I don't know if it's true or not, Trader Joe's decides where to put a store based on the number of unemployed PhDs in the area, because they want good quality, organic food, and they don't have a lot of money. But what I came here to talk about tonight is, I thought I'd been doing this in a few weeks, but it looks like spring is already here. So when the weather gets warm, we have a couple of problems on Charlotte Street. Number one, people want to enjoy Mercer Park, and so they want to speed down our street so they can get to Mercer Park a second and a half earlier. It's a blind hill at the end of the street, it's a one-block street. So I've talked to the chief about this before, and I'd like to request that we get the, I don't know what you call it, a radar sign, the sign that says, this is your speed, if we could get that, you know, early in the spring when people are starting to get down there.
We call it speedy, but it's really a speed reader.
Speedy? I love that.
That's a term we use.
So yeah, I'd like to see more tickets written for speeding, not, not just on Charlotte Street, a lot of streets, I know people talk about this all the time. And at some point, if that doesn't work, I would like the village to consider reducing our speed limit on Charlotte Street and other one-block streets to 15 or 20, because 30's just, it's really fast for that street. And, you know, I called Chief and said, they're going 50, and he said, they're not going 50, but I mean...
25 under state law is the lowest that...
Is the lowest we can go, and didn't River Street go to, I thought River Street went to 20?
Division is 15.
Yeah.
No, Division's not 15, it's up in the school area.
Right, it's the only sign on the street. It doesn't say school, so...
They might have a pedestrian like school crossing, but...
Yeah, the speed limit in the village, under the village code, is 30. So the only reason Division Street would be 15 is because of, you've got that pathway that comes out there, so that's, that's where that would be. Otherwise, under the village code, it's 30 unless, unless marked something different. But that was by village board action.
Okay, well, I'd like, you know, see if we can, if we can mitigate the problem there, and if we need to change codes to make something happen, I don't know. Just like you to consider it. The second thing, this...
I'm not kidding, Charlotte Street is one of the things under this place.
I heard that, and, you know, that wouldn't necessarily be the bad idea.
That would show down the people going to them.
Or they would have head-on collisions, which, you know, whichever. The other thing is, and this is only, it's about a two-year problem, but in the summer, there's at least two guys, maybe more, with big trucks who have train horns on their trucks, and they think it's super fun to blow those train horns in the Four Corners. And I've had it punked on me on the bridge. I have taken pictures of one of the trucks with his license plate, I knew who it was, showed it to the police, and they said, we can't do it, we have to catch them. So, please catch them. They like to do it at lunchtime, they like to do it on Friday evenings, and they like to do it all day Saturday. I live a block and a half from Four Corners, and I can hear it. I have a friend who lives in an apartment at the Four Corners, she hears it all day long, and they have done it at mid-nineteen, so...
Do you have plate, plate information?
I do.
Yeah, sure.
What's a trademark?
I'm sorry?
Train horn.
It sounds like a train.
You can email me that information.
I will, I will. So I was on the bridge one day, and the truck was behind me and blew the train horn. I knew there was not a train on the bridge, but your, your first thought is, oh my God, you know, I'm going to die, and, and I'm 60, I'm elderly, but still functioning. But, you know, an 85-year-old woman driving through the Four Corners and hears, hears a train horn, what, I mean, something horrible could happen. So, just those two things, it seems to be a summer trend, and I appreciate your attention to it.
Yeah, sure, if you send me that information, we can look into it.
I will do that, thank you.
Yeah.
James Miller, 2 Division Street. I just want to add to the speeding. We live on Division and Tappan, and we see cars, once they hit Division, floor it, down the rest of Tappan, and you can hear them because the engine goes, boom, and off they go. And they are doing 50 or more on that.
Yeah, they start at McCary, right by my house.
So what, I know in the past, we've had one of those indicators, I don't think it would matter to them. I also know police do pull people over there, it just hasn't seemed to make much of a difference lately. And as the weather's gotten warmer, the speed's gotten faster. And I don't know what, what is reasonable, but, you know, there's a lot of families on that street, there's a lot of people that walk along the sidewalks, and I'm just concerned that there is going to be an incident at some point.
Sure, you know, Tappan Street, Syracuse Street, Smokey Hollow Road, Canton Street, East Genesee Street, Salinas Street. Every one of those streets is, is a problem for us. We wrote over 1,000 traffic tickets last year as a department.
Can we increase the fines?
I have nothing to do with fines, and we don't write tickets for revenue generating, we write them to keep traffic flowing in a safe fashion and for...
I'm not talking about revenue generating, I'm talking about determining.
Fines are set by New York State, so I have nothing to do with that. But what I can tell you is certainly, I hear your, your concerns, I will talk to our staff. We have a selective traffic enforcement program where we rotate streets in the village on a regular basis for our staff to aggressively enforce those over a two- or three-week period at different shifts, and we rotate those. I can talk to our staff and determine where Tappan Street is on that, I don't know off the top of my head, but make sure that we, if that's an issue that's being cropping up right now, we can certainly address that.
And I would suggest a speed bump, except that's the route that the fire department takes and that...
Well, you can't, you can't put a speed bump on public roadway, so...
Would it solve the problem, though?
It might, yeah, but on private roads, you can't put it on public roads.
Okay, good to know.
Not to mention, the TPW guys wouldn't be able to plow in the winter. But, no, I certainly understand what you're saying, and I will have our staff look to address that.
All right, thank you.
I want to add a comment regarding, what do you call it, speed?
The speed reader.
I think that's very effective for the citizen who intends to obey the law, but kind of forgets, and gets going along, and they get a reminder. It doesn't affect the person who's purposely trying to avoid the law. So I think it's a great reminder when it circulates around the community.
And often, often what we do is, well, and we put the speed reader, it's not deployed in the wintertime because of the snow banks, and, you know, it's, we try and keep it off the roadway when we can, but we'll often deploy it, especially on the streets that I mentioned, those known problem areas, and then we'll back that up a couple weeks later with some enforcement. So people that regularly travel that route, they really have no excuse for not slowing down, because that does raise the awareness of what the speed limit is and what their speed is, and then also backing that up with some enforcement.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Seeing no one else running to the mic, I'm going to quickly move on. We have a special presentation by Jim Dale, and I have contacted Jim and asked him to be sent.
I will be. Speedy.
But it's a big presentation.
Speedy under 30 miles an hour.
Our couch called to, did you put speedy on today?
Speedy. Mark, just for your information, I sent you a copy, can he hear me?
Yeah.
Hey, Mark? Now, I think he's...
Is that my phone?
Is this my company?
Yes.
All right, in any case, Jim Dale, 70 Oswego, no, I think he's not there.
He is there, he's ignoring you.
Yeah, we'll get back to it, it's been a while. Jim Dale, 70 Oswego Street, representing the Baldensville Center for the Arts. I gave each of the trustees and the mayor and the clerk a copy of the proposal for Paper Mill Island. And let me just bring this up a little bit.
I put it down when I walked through here, because it seems I put it so you bend me over.
Yeah, I don't want it to fall over. I'm not this tall. I am not going to go through this page by page, it's 12 pages long, but I do want to give you a little bit of summary, and for those who don't know the history of the Baldensville Center for the Arts, it behooves me to tell you a little bit about us. Many, many years ago, in 2006, the Center for the Arts was founded on an endowment from the Catherine Nittin-Moyer. She bequeathed the money to us, about $92,000. Somebody's mother was on the board at that time, I can't remember who it was, but, but in any case, over the last couple of decades, we've tried to fulfill the mission of the Center for the Arts, which is essentially to provide an arts experience to the village residents, and to then in turn support local artists who have interest in a, in a spectrum of arts. It seems to me that for all of their effort over the last decade, or decade ago, to create a beautiful Center for the Arts, which I happened to see a sketch of the other day that Bruce shared with me, and I shared that with the board, the feasibility of getting a building built back in 2006, let me see, just a second before the economy crashed, was not good. And then ultimately, the biggest issues were in providing maintenance and upkeep on the facility and staffing it up at the long haul. Times have changed, and one of the things that we discussed at the, at the board meeting of the Center for the Arts was that, wow, all of a sudden, there's a facility, an amphitheater, within our grasp, something that's sitting in the middle of the village, is being underutilized at the moment, but that the Center for the Arts would love to fill every day of the season. So the proposal in front of you basically outlines some of the things in which we see some synergy between what's there and what could be there. And what I'd like for the board to consider, for the trustees to consider, is the fact that, you know, going a route with a commercial promoter pegs you into just music venue. The Center for the Arts, because we are a non-for-profit and a charity that is devoted to promoting every aspect of the arts, we can offer a much broader offering in terms of dramatic arts, all kinds of things, dance, theater, music, as well as, as family-friendly and child-friendly events that would fill up the island. and child-friendly events that would fill up the island for the good part of mid-June through September. I've outlined some of the ideas that we've had in there. We've had two meetings of a subcommittee for the Paper Mill Island. We have some trustees who are on that committee, and we had a great visit from the mayor the other day. He said to hear what was going on. But the essential part of this that I'd like to share is that we have just a tremendous enthusiasm to get this done. We have members of that committee who have music connections all over the place. We have members of that community, that committee, who have theater connections, and we have members who are really devoted Baldonsvillians who really want to see that island used for the betterment of the community. So there are some things about the island as it stands that are issues, and there are some long-term and some short-term ones that we think that we could get fixed if we could come up with a plan for that. So in the past, I talked to Mark about long-term vision for the island, but in the short term, we're up against a couple of really obvious ones. So one of them is the weather. In order to create a series of events and present a full calendar on the island for any artist who's performed on the amphitheater stage, at about four o'clock, the sun's in your eyes, and it stays there until six o'clock, when it goes down the river. Some of the artists that I spoke with who wanted a book reminded me that, oh, yeah, I performed on there. We talked to a guy from, was it Atlas? Atlas, who said, "I was blind the entire--
I was taking half a book at a time."
Yeah, that's it. But there is a commercial product, shade sales. You see them in parks all across the county and all over the Northeast. They provide two things. They get you out of the sun for pretty cheap because you're basically buying sell clothes. And some of them are weather resistant so that if there was a sprinkle during the middle of a performance, you don't shut down and you don't have to pay cancellation fees and refund tickets. We're looking at what would be best for a long-term vision. We think the Center for the Arts, in partnership with the village, would create just the kind of venue, constant, filled season that everyone in the community could benefit from. So we've outlined some of the things that we are proposing in there. We see even more going forward into the future. But for the 2024 season, we were surprised by how many music acts there might be available for this coming season, though it's really late in terms of scheduling national acts. We still may be able to pick up one or two, and we're hoping for that. So there's also this opportunity and an understanding that the Center for the Arts has to reach with the village in that we are a non-for-profit, and we are expecting, if we go forward and create this schedule of events, that there would be some cost-sharing done, especially on the free events that are beneficial to the community and don't put any revenue back in the non-for-profit. But on the ticket events, where we can reasonably profit share, the organization is happy to do it. We know then that that money is not only going back into the community through us, but also through the village. And all those details are outlined in the proposal, and on the last page, there are some terms and conditions that we looked at as a board that we think would make it feasible for us to engage.
The potential for revenue generally that comes toward the village is to go back into the island.
Yes, I get that, and that's the perfect part. You know, it's one thing if you hire a promoter and he's bringing in national acts, but every penny, other than a small fee for use, goes somewhere else with the Center for the Arts. We know it's gonna stay here, and what doesn't literally turn into an event on Paper Mill Island will turn into an event in one of the other parks, including Ghost Walk. Any questions for me?
I wonder why you won't put Seneca River Days on your agenda.
Because it's not-- It happened before June fifteenth. That was it.
That is three days before--
I know. Rocco, didn't we have them on the agenda?
We did.
I think when I printed the calendar, I just picked June fifteenth. I did. I left that right off there. Yes. Seneca River Days, let's promote those. Those are at the beginning of June, right after Peony Fest.
They might--
Yeah. We can promote Peony Fest, too. That happens in June, just doesn't happen in the park. Yeah, it's not in the park, exactly. I didn't throw Ghost Walk in there. It doesn't happen in the park.
I'm going to suggest the public stay tuned. Attending that meeting, I've heard things about rocking the lock and holy wars.
That's right.
You gotta check in to find out what they're talking about.
That's absolutely true, and there's more good pickups. We need to reach this major understanding, and then the board is very, very eager to proceed and go ahead. One of the notices I want to make is that I, you may have heard this at the meeting, Bruce, but the Syracuse University had reached out to me. For most summers, kids in the drama department are always looking to do summer stock, and unfortunately, there aren't always enough roles as there are potential actors. And so for the ones that get stranded without acting work, they reached out to the Center for the Arts and suggested that we put together a summer stock program. So I had a nice meeting today with a few folks, and we think we can pull that off, which would mean a larger offering of theater, including children's camps for the summer, and we would have it staffed all the time from all those poor urgents who can't get other jobs, but would be happy to work here in Baldonsville. Thank you.
Are they PhDs, though?
Yes, they're all looking for Trader Joe's to have-- That's right. Yeah, that was the first requirement they wanted, their stipend and a Trader Joe's. That's it.
They could pay you a Trader Joe's, though.
Yeah. Any other questions for me? Look it over. Y'all have my number.
Rocco, good to see you. Now you know where I am.
He just couldn't place you there, Bruce.
Moving along to trustees comments. You're up there.
I just want to wish everyone good luck in the upcoming election, March nineteenth. Hopefully, everyone will stay involved either way, however it goes, and I'll stick to the agenda.
I would bet you Casino Night, you put up, like, it's probably going too slow.
No, it wasn't gonna. Don't do it.
All right, well, the Casino Night is this Saturday night. Tickets are still available.
Yep.
And it's at the-- What's the name of it?
Posters on the Green.
Posters on the Green. Where are the tickets available? Go to the Volunteer Center website.
Aren't they sold out? No.
I think they're not sold out.
Do you know how much the tickets are? Might as well promote it all the way.
Do you know how much the tickets are? They're twenty-five in advance, or they're thirty at the door until they're gone. So, but you can always call the Volunteer Center and find more information.
I'm in charge of decorations.
Yeah, he's the balloon guy.
Yeah, I'm the balloon guy. Other than I'll stick to the agenda. Thank you.
I have two items to add to our already lengthy agenda. So the first one being looking for a motion to authorize the DPW superintendent to order a bucket truck from Altech Industries at a cost not to exceed $150,000.
Pending legal--
Pending legal review. Sorry, I forgot to write that part down.
It's an important part.
Make a motion.
Oh, we're just adding--
This is item J.
--into the agenda right now.
Oh, okay. We appreciate your being here.
I'm ready to wait.
This is--
We need it.
Three hours.
Oh, okay.
Three hours.
Three hours, okay.
And then the second item, so that would have been J. The next item would be authorizing the purchase of a VinTrak mower at a cost not to exceed $60,000, and the purchase of this mower would be made using funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, which everybody knows to knows as our bummer. So, and then I have one other Volunteer Center item I want to bring up. The Volunteer Center is gonna be honoring the Volunteers of the Year for 2023. The event is on April sixth, excuse me, April sixth. Also, Posters on the Green. Our honorees for 2023 are Cindy Dow Green, who's been very active in the local YMCA, in the Baldonsville Community Scholarship Foundation, and with the Baldonsville Christmas Bureau, specifically their Thanksgiving baskets that they do, among other things, but those are the three main things. And then we had a group of gentlemen from the Lions Club that we found it very hard to distinguish any one of them from the three of them, so we are honoring three Lions Club members who, I'm told, have all been members of the Lions Club of Baldonsville for forty years or more. Bert Mead, Ron Schmidt, and Jack Ozenski. So if you're interested in coming and celebrating these four volunteers this year, like I said, the event is April sixth. You can call the Volunteer Center office and make a reservation. The dinner is $30 a person. The number you would call is 315-638-0251. Other than that, I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Ruth?
I'll just leave the agenda.
Fuck, you're gonna leave it.
I'll just leave. Yep.
I'm gonna go to Nate.
I just want to say, you know, now that we're getting to the election day, that it is not every day you work with people that obviously care about their work. And I've thoroughly enjoyed working with every single one of you, and as a group, I feel we work very well together, keeping Baldonsville a great place to live. And part of the cohesiveness that we have in this group is that we prioritize our local issues without partisan pressure being a factor in decision-making. And so with the election coming up, regardless of how it goes, I look forward to and hope that we can continue to be, that that is the priority of this board. And like Eric said, I just want to wish everybody luck in the election on the nineteenth and, you know, but hopefully everything, you know, goes well.
Thank you.
Stick to the agenda.
I just want to say thank you to Rocco and Jim, which isn't here now, for bringing this. I really love this. I got, I'm a quick read, so I like everything about this. So I'm looking forward to this summer and every aspect of it. I'd like to wish my opponents good luck. I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay, so it comes to me, and I have housekeeping. Gonna remind everybody, birthday is coming up for my book. It happens in, not the days that OCRRA does. They're celebrating it on April twelfth and thirteenth. I don't know why. But if you're interested in participating in Earth Day cleanup or organizing one, they would like you to register if you contact www.ocrra.org by April third. They will then send you-- You're doing it?
I have a member who's gonna be organizing a cleanup in the village, and we're in the early stages, but that, and we're doing it the day before the actual Earth Day, so it'll be on the 21st of April.
But then you really wanna-- You're gonna do it on the 21st?
Yeah.
Well, if you contact them, they will send you the bags and the tags that allow the village to dispose of the stuff without a fee.
Thank you. I will pass that along.
Perfect. I don't know, does OCRRA contact you?
They do.
Because sometimes you end up--
And we usually give them their number for schedule and everything.
Because you'll see groups clean up the area that you've signed up to clean before you get there sometimes.
Oh, right.
Yeah. That's not a bad--
They'll be thrilled to talk to you.
So, okay, Earth Day. Second thing, Onondah County Soil and Water Conservation District, who does many things for us, including harvest water chestnuts, is having their tree and shrub sale. And if you want any of their trees and shrubs, I'm not gonna comment on them. Orders are due by March 12th, 2024, and you either can call them at 315-457-0325, or their website is info@ocswcd.org. That's Onondah County Soil and Water Conservation District, in case you're wondering how they put those letters. And they've got discounts for bundles, and they'll have an order form on their website, or you can have this one if you're in the audience tonight. Okay. I don't need, I'm not gonna do that because we did it. Not going there either. What I want to do next is, since we've heard a lot about the election coming up on March 19th, and I assume everybody watching on Back B knows it's March 19th, and everybody out there, I know you guys know. The election board provided us with a sample ballot. So this is my little teaching effort, Professor Wells. When you see, this is the first time for a village election we'll be using these machines. I assume all of you are familiar with them from other elections. On the front of the ballot, there's gonna be two lines. One's called the village, they're the offices. Under Mayor's, the first column, you vote for one. Right now, there's one name, but the write-in line's available. Under trustee, you need to select three candidates. There's six names there from the two different parties running, but you need to select three, not four, three. I don't know. If you select four, then you're leaving up to the election board which ones they throw out, and they'll throw the whole thing out probably. Then, as Vicky pointed out to me last week, you turn it over, even though mine is stapled together, and that's the important part. Remember to turn it over, and we've talked to the election board. We're concerned that people will forget, so, but they say there'll be signage and stuff here. On the back are the resolutions. Resolution one, Proposition one, rather, says, "Move the election to June. Vote yes if you want to, no if you don't." Proposition two says, "Move it to November." Once again, vote yes if that's what you want and no if that's what you don't want. I'm trying to emphasize voting yes or no, because if everybody votes yes, or everybody vote, if y'all vote no, it stays in March, but if y'all vote yes, then village residents don't decide the outcome. It goes to somebody, some judicial process, and they decide what we're doing. So I'm recommending everybody make sure you at least vote no on one of them, if not on both. I'm not recommending, I'm gonna stay out of the muddy water. Okay. Any questions on how to use the ballot? If anybody's curious about any of this stuff, feel free to call me. Feel free to contact any of the people running for office. They'd be glad to share their opinion on everything. Correct, Brian?
I thought so. I don't get to talk to Brian very often.
Really? I can't make rotary meetings, neither work schedule.
I can come to Seneca River Days.
You're right. I can still volunteer, yeah?
Okay. I believe that's all I'm gonna talk about. I wrote this stuff down. We're moving along. So-- Going to department heads.
I'll stick with the agenda.
We haven't put you asleep yet, huh?
No. I just woke up.
It looks like your chair is low.
I know.
It's all over the deck.
I'm gonna stick to the agenda. Thank you.
Ruth is not.
Just a couple of quick things. We actually have two opportunities for music at the center this month. One is March 13th, which is a Wednesday. That's gonna be a St. Patrick's program with Murrell of Merry Mischief. That's at 11 o'clock. Come on over and listen to that. And then on Friday, March 29th, 11 o'clock, Dave Lucky and, I believe he's gonna do Sixties and Seventies, so come on over for those. I just want to remind folks that our entire newsletter is always on all three municipal sites, the village and both towns. You can always find it there. And also, don't forget, if you have any traditional timepieces that you need to move your clocks this weekend, so you won't be late for whatever fun thing you're gonna do on Sunday. And that's it. Thank you.
Do you have Mark next, or who?
Sure. I don't know. He's over there chuckling. I don't even know if Mark can hear us.
He can.
We can't hear you, Mark.
I can totally hear you.
I thought your father was listening.
Do you think I would have gone, what is it? It's like been 50 minutes. I would never have gone 50 minutes without being able to hear you and not send it. So I just have a couple things. Number one, very encouraging proposal from the Center for the Arts. Jim sent me a copy of it, and I just started to look at it tonight. Initially, certainly looks great. It's just nice to have some fresh ideas. That's the biggest thing. And I would offer, at the pleasure of the board, if-- And I would offer, at the pleasure of the Board, if I know what the village's numbers look like for our costs associated with some of the, you know, when we have an event. And I'm sure that Jim knows what the expectations will be on the end of the, from the Center for the Arts. So I'm gonna be back in Baldensville in another week and a half here, so I would love to get together if that's, if that's what the Board would like, and at least put together maybe a pro forma or something that gives you an idea of what could happen or what some of the options might be. That's the first thing. And the second thing would be an agenda item, which is just the budget modifications, and feel free to ask any questions if, when we get to that. Other than that, I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay. Moving on to our EPW Superintendent.
Yep, just a quick thing on the people on Island thing. I've been involved in management with the island since I was built. We haven't done anything like this before, and it's pretty refreshing, and I hope it goes well for them. We'll see how it works out. The Highway Department, what everybody keeps calling for, brush pickup is April 1st. That's when we start doing brush again. I mean, we've been getting them all year long, but we'll be back out there April 1st for that. Down on Marble Street, we, we have our resident fence guy here, Mark Zach, just happens to be here. And he had built a fence down there, a guard rail down there, did a great job on it like 10 years ago. We had like 20 posts that rotted out. Mark saves a bunch of money on a lot of the fence work that we do, and a lot of money. And they're down here this week, you know, not doing a lot of plowin' here. And they're down here this week, and I think they got all 20 posts out today, and they're rebuilding that. They literally were just falling right over there, just rotted out, just had some bad wood in there. But they're doing a good job down, and it's looking really well. Can Street, the real, the real excitement's gonna be at Can Street this next week. We've been three years trying to do the electrical upgrade up there. We, the electrical and the fluoride, the fluoride's coming, but we've received close to $200,000 in grant money that the village has gone after. Everything's finally in, and we finally got everybody to the table. And Monday, Monday around 9 o'clock, the power's gonna be terminated in the building, air is gonna come out, and all the new equipment's gonna go in. It's just all modern, up-to-date stuff, it's gonna be fantastic. They rebuilt, they had, the power's so old over there, when they shut the water department off, the lift station quit across the street. So they had to put some new transfers over there, and then they, the power company took care of that. And we're excited about it. We redid it in-house, up to, doing well a few years ago. And it's just, the pumps come on easier, quieter. They're rebuilding the whole skater system with some of the ARPA money, and, or we're gonna clean the well out there a little bit with some of that money, too. I've been fortunate since I've been here, pretty much any of the maintenance we want to do with the water department or anything, that the Board has never told me no. And it's a lot of work that we're able to get done. There was a lot of money to do that, and between the grant money and some of the ARPA money and some of the budget money we put in, I never thought we'd get it done in my time here, and it looks like we're just gonna make it. But it's gonna be a great upgrade for the system over there. We've had a rough winter with some of the water breaks this year, and people are asking me about that. We had two big breaks downtown, and we traditionally don't have many downtown, but that's just a, that's what it is. I sit on the Board for training for water operators for Central New York, and I talk with them all over New York State and everybody here in Central New York. It's been a tough year, because it's been real cold or real warm, or real cold or real warm, and the ground moves. The ground moves, pipe shift. So it's, we really, we really haven't had many more breaks than we've had in previous years, but the ones we've had have been very visible. But other than that, unless there's questions, I need that.
I know there have been publicly, people have expressed a concern about infrastructure because of the two visible breaks. And Chuck is our assessment tool. He's been here as long as the water has. And what he's trying to share to you, and is sharing with you, is that we have a constant program of investing in the water delivery system. From the wells, the wells out on Route 370, if you guys don't know, we have five wells, called the Dome Well Field, that get redeveloped. They're drilled wells, they have a fair amount of calcium that builds in them, so they have to be redeveloped. That, you know, that's not exciting news, goes on. The well over on Can Street is a unique well. It's a hand-dug shallow well. Years ago, up in Fulton, there were wells that looked just like it, collapsed. We reacted, put in a...
New liner.
I don't know what you call that.
Put a new liner, new liner.
A new structure over there to keep it safe. So there, there are things going on, but unless there's a break, nobody notices. But whatever.
Right. And the one in front of Second Federal, that wasn't the main line, that was a hydrant stump that had been pushed across the road years back. The one by the diner, there was three water taps that were put in one spot, which you don't do, obviously you do, but you don't do that, and the pipe was weak right there, and that's where the pipe let go. But other than that, we're very fortunate to have as much water as we have. The Department at the end of the year, that pays all the salaries for the employees, they pay for a lot of bills, and then there's money that goes back into the coffers every year. But unless there's questions, that's all I have.
So Chuck, can you just reassure the people who live on the south side of the village that when the power gets shut down next weekend, that well, that they're not losing water for a week?
No showers there.
Yeah, that's right. Well, I'd love the north side. No, actually, our holding tanks are on the north side of the river, and we have two big lines going across. So Dome Well will take over, we'll just change the levels of Dome Well, where those pumps will come on earlier. I mean, we've had times when we've, when we've painted our tanks, and they've been on a service for a month, you know, and, and the two systems will take care of them. But Dome Well will, will more than supply the whole thing, and as long as we can have those tanks. The problem we had the other day was the break was close to the line under the bridge, and we had to shut that line off. And when we did, the county turned theirs on, and we couldn't get as much pressure from them as we thought, but they're great to work with, too. And they turned that on, and we kicked the pump on over there, and it worked out well. But no, there'll be no, there'll be, well, there'll be no interruptions, and the system's designed, if one plant isn't running, the other can take it over.
So that's the other thing that you just mentioned, is your cooperation with OPR.
Yep.
It's not always, we turn on and get their water. Sometimes they have a problem, and you're opening valves to feed their system.
Right. In the last 10 years, we've probably opened for them, we've only opened theirs like twice since I've been there, but we get along great with them. And when we had the problem over on the other side of the river, I made one phone call, and they just said, "Do what, let us know." And they're, they're a really good partner, and we've helped them out tremendously up on the other end of the river. They had a, they had a bad line on Hinkle Boulevard, and it broke a lot. Every time it broke, once we turned our water on, they'd never knew the difference. They fixed it in a way, and went well. But we're in good shape.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the Chief.
I have nothing much.
You have nothing? Okay.
Welcome back.
Pending business, there is none.
Hey.
Yeah. Item A, motion to approve the AIM funding resolution to be sent to elected officials in the state.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
For those of you out there who maybe don't know what that means, it's a aid provided by the state. It's been stagnant for over a decade. This is a request to the state to revisit their budget and consider increasing the aid they provide to us. Item B, motion to approve the pro housing community policy adoption resolution.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
To reassure you, Sally, this is not an action to go out and build 1,000 houses. This is an action to fulfill requirements by the state of New York, that you have to have certain things in place so you can apply for grants for, six different grants or more. So this is, this is busy work. Moving on, we voted, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Item C, motion to set a public hearing for Thursday, March 21, 2024, at 7:35, to consider a proposed local law to authorize best value competitive bidding and procurement pursuant to General Municipal Law 103.
Vote.
Second.
Bob, do you want to comment on that at all?
Well, this is, this is a law, first of all, the General Municipal Law 103 is basically sets the rules for municipal bidding, the monetary amount for purchases and for services. The, the law was amended some time ago to allow a municipality to adopt a local law to use what they call the best value competitive bidding, which means that in, in looking at bidding process itself, you, you don't necessarily always have to take the lowest bid if you feel that there's a better value by taking another bid relative to its long life, the service that's connected, et cetera. But it also allows the, in certain circumstances, the village to bypass the competitive bidding process, where there are bids coming off of municipal lists. This also allows piggybacking on not only state lists, which we can already do by statute, but county, other municipality bidding lists, and even municipality lists from other states. So that if there's, they were looking for DPW equipment, for example, and we see that there's exactly what we want, that is on a bidding list in Massachusetts, and if they've gone through the same bidding process that the state has, we're authorized to go and snap that up. So this gives us much more option, and many, many villages have adopted this particular local law.
Thank you. Make a motion.
I think we already did.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carried. We'll see, everybody marks 21st.
Yep.
Motion to approve the 2024-2025 compensation schedule for salaried hourly village employees. Did everybody get that?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll move it.
This was something that our Treasurer came up with, and he thinks we need to have in place. So could we have a second? Did you want to comment any further on that, Mark, or not? It's pretty straightforward.
Mew.
I'm mew.
Nice reaction.
Okay, I did confirm with the CPA that I consult with for the village, who is a former comptroller's office employee, and she said, "Yes, we absolutely have to do this." It is something, I think I got the first idea for it from the Towne Lysander meeting I was at there. And we have to do it once a year, and then at any time when anything ever changes, so the appointment of a new person, you know, any new hires like that, or changes in pay schedule, have to be approved by the Board at a regular meeting. So it's a, it's a good thing, creates a common understanding among all of us, too.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That one's carried. Item E, motion to approve budget modifications as proposed in the document Budget Modifications It's a PDF.
PDF. I'll motion the PDF.
I'll second that.
Anything else, Mr. Treasurer?
No, I mean, we're getting, you know, this is the end of the year, and you will, you will be happy that we did all these as we went through the year at every meeting, because the budget is very tidy right now, so.
Excellent.
And I thank you for your, your support of that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Item F, motion to renew the group life insurance coverage through Renaissance Life and Health Insurance Company of New York at the current rate effective 4/1/24.
Vote.
Second. Didn't change a lot, no.
No, it says the rate's the same.
It's the same.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. We like it when things don't go up. Okay, item G, motion to accept the resignation with regret of Mary, of Information Aid, Mary Augustus, effective April 12th, 2024.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
I wish her well.
Yeah, I worked with Mary at the zoning board, had good experiences with her, and wish her well, too.
Yeah, same with the planning board.
Okay. Feel free to stop in and tell her that. All in favor?
You mean she's not watching this on PACB?
I think Mary's probably sleeping. Any opposed? Carried. Okay. H, motion to appoint Kelly Battles as Information Aid effective March 11th, 2024, to salary at $38,000 per year.
Motion.
Second.
I'm gonna ask Jody to comment on this, because this is Jody's hire.
Yeah, she comes from Aqua, so she had almost 16 years experience at Aqua. You know, her references were very good, so we're very excited, very excited to start on Monday.
Any questions? I've talked to Jody about the overlap of having two employees, and she feels that the training period is going to be important. So I will leave that to her judgment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Item I, motion to approve the following items from the DPW surplus. 2004 Chevy 2500 4x4, 2006 Chevy two-wheel drive, a 1988 International stake rack, 1979 Ford 900 tanker, and a Gravely mower model, 992216.
Vote.
Second.
Any of these run?
They do run.
Is that, is that pick up the one that you tried to give to Greg out here?
He drove that one for a little bit.
Till his feet fell through?
And then Michelle drove it for another two years, and it's just shock. I think Rick might have drove it a little bit back there, too, but yeah, it's just, it's not roadworthy anymore.
Do you two gentlemen agree that we should get rid of this equipment?
We'd be gracious.
Yeah, so, okay.
You give it to, you give it to my dad, he'll have another 10, 15 years.
It's probably not heavy enough anymore to get any money out of scrap.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Carried.
Going to the backside of your agenda, item J, have a motion to authorize a DPW superintendent to order his bucket truck from Altec...
Motion.
...for no more than $160,000 pending, or authorizing of as pending legal review. And Joe motioned it twice now.
I'll second Joe's motion.
Which one?
The one with the legal review, that one.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried. You get to do your thing. Good call, man.
Thank you. They replace a truck 24 years old, and that's just, thank you for that.
So sometime in August or September, we'll be scrapping that one, right?
Maybe before then. It's all Bob does, so.
Item K, authorizing the DPW superintendent to purchase a Vint Trac mower. I didn't write this down.
At a cost not to exceed $60,000.
Funded through...
And funded, yes, through the ARPA funds.
Can you explain what it is?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Wait, wait, now that we have a motion, second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Would you like to explain?
What this vehicle is, we just went through the EPA audit this year, and we haven't had one in a very long time, and now they're telling us that we have to maintain our detention pods, and we have no way of doing it. And we went in with an excavator on one of them this year, just dug everything out. Then there's a couple of big ones that we can get in with this machine, and we can also use it for our trails, you know, we're having trouble... also use it for our trails, you know, that we're having trouble with down on Yevich Trail and behind the buildings there, and we have to maintain those with everything growing over. This has got a 12-foot sidearm on it, and some of our roadside stuff we can do with this unit, and it's also got a mower on it, so we can do some of our terrain mowing. But the biggest thing is the detention ponds, and we're responsible for them, and we have to do it, and we just have no way of getting in there.
And in bucket add, we spent $30,000 at least to have somebody else do it for us.
Oh, correct. Well, we went in with an excavator, it was soap and treason, and they, you know, and they said, "You got to get them out of there." And it's like, well, we got nothing to get them out of there with, so we did. And we, we've got two of them, looking really well. Third one's coming, we did some ditching and some of our other things, we got the water moving pretty well on some of these things, but that's.
In most cases, you think we can maintain the ones that we paid to have cleared with this?
Well, I think this, the next one up on Astrid Springs, we can get in there with this one.
But on Smokey Howl, will we be able?
Oh, absolutely. Actually, Smokey Howl, the homeowners are owning now, and they're doing a real good job, but if they don't, the guys go up and touch it up a little bit, but that was fantastic. That used to have 11-foot weeds in it, and we spent some money in some of those, but this machine can get in and do them all, and it's a, and with the ARPA money, it's great.
If we approve this, it'll delay your retirement. Is that the deal?
No, we're going to hire it back because it's a seasonal.
Right in the pond.
Could I, everybody in favor of Chuck's toy?
Yeah.
Opposed?
It's your retirement present.
There you go.
Thank you.
So anything else before the Board? Have a motion to pay Mills's audit.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Motion to adjourn the meeting X, 8:41. Is that correct?
Motion.
Second.